Started. To get the meeting started, I see we have a quorum here. And everyone but Daryl. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted? Uh, now is the time for visitor communication for anything not pertaining to what we're going to be discussing. We'll have time a little later for communication regarding the urban growth boundary amendment. Okay. On to the workshop.
All right. Thank you, Chair. So, welcome everyone to the fourth workshop of the Planning Commission on the Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. We have a full agenda for you tonight, so we will not waste a whole lot of time getting into it. Along with us tonight is our consultants on the Zoom call, Andrew Parrish and Matt Hasty. So they'll be helping us out with the discussion tonight. The first topic that we're gonna talk about is just give you a project update, generally where we are in the process, and a summary of our open space, open space, open house events, and the feedback that we got from that. And then we'll have 15 minutes or so for public comment right after that, before we get on to the rest of our agenda. So we had a great response to our open house, both our in-person open house and to our online open house, as Andrew will go into detail here in a few minutes. So we got great feedback on the alternatives that we put forth, get some great feedback on terms of the different criteria, and how, which factors and criteria are the most important to the community. And, but I just want to emphasize it, just because those open houses have been completed, it doesn't mean that the opportunities for comment and feedback have ended. In fact, those will continue throughout the process. And so, please feel free to provide us your comments anytime, steering committee meetings, planning commission meetings. There's a city council meeting next week at 5 o'clock, where we'll have, talk about the same presentation as you're hearing tonight, as well as an opportunity to address the city council. And then just going forward, will still be plenty of opportunity for public feedback. We had a great steering committee meeting last week. In fact, three of our planning commission members and our council liaisons are on that steering committee. So as we go through the process tonight, feel free to offer any insight that you guys had from the meeting and the process, or help answer any questions. So, I think with that, Andrew, or Matt, I think either of you, if you wouldn't mind taking it over and starting the presentation on the project status?
Yes, I am gonna share the screen with y'all, and then Andrew and I are gonna kind of tag-team the presentation. He's gonna take the first part until the public comment. I'll take a little bit after that, and we'll kind of go back and forth. He needs to leave at 5, so I'll cover the last part as well, and that's why I'm the one running the slideshow. So, can everybody see that up there? Awesome, okay. Take it away, Andrew, and just tell me when to switch the slides if I don't figure it out on my own.
All right, thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, everybody. So this is a picture of the timeline of the project for the urban growth boundary. We're now at the point where we are, we have created several alternatives. We've talked to the community about them, we've talked to you all about them, and we have put together an initial evaluation of those alternatives. We're on our way toward a preferred alternative, which we had originally talked about happening in kind of the February to March timeline, aiming towards a adoption of a preferred urban growth boundary this summer. But some of the things that we talk about today may have some schedule impacts. So this is kind of where we are, where we are currently. Next slide. So some of the things that we've been up to lately, we've, we had a really great open house in December. We had an online version of that open house that closed in January. We have had some discussions with folks at the state and federal level about some regulations that are, that will impact kind of the land in the vicinity of the City of Sisters. We've got a couple of little pieces, mostly informational for you all, to talk about there. There's been a number of public letters and correspondence that the city has done a good job of putting up on the website, so other folks can kind of see them, and letters and correspondence continues to come in. We heard about, and we'll talk about today, a rezone application in the county for a property that is adjacent to the urban growth boundary and what that might mean for our process. We developed a draft Alternatives Analysis Report, which I believe you have in your packet, and is kind of the main body of work that will inform kind of findings for the city going forward into adoption. But that's just a draft at this point, and we will continue to revise it. And then we had our steering committee meeting on January 30th that we'll summarize here for you all. So going into kind of an overview of the public engagement that has happened lately, that December 9th open house, seems like a long time ago at this point. We had over 200 participants, which was really astounding for a community of the size of Sisters on IC, you know, December 9. We had a presentation with some city staff and the consultant team kind of speaking to everybody in a brief Q and A, and then broke out into a number of small group discussions to have kind of more detailed conversation among community members. Next slide. So some of the things that we heard at that meeting were that folks really wanted us to prioritize vacant property and prioritize land near the existing urban growth boundary, kind of with the intent overall of avoiding sprawl. I don't think anybody wants to see anything that could be considered sprawl in the vicinity of Sisters. Folks said that we should prioritize land that can be served efficiently and protect views, maintain lower densities, and focus on housing affordability and livability. When we put kind of the same set of questions to folks in an online survey, we got about 390 participants who filled out at least one answer. So that was, those could be some repeats, or those could be people who just kind of dropped in and filled out one or two things and dropped out, but we got a good chunk of participation there. It was evenly split among people who live in Sister City Limits and people who live outside Sisters City Limits. Many of the participants own property in the study area, a third said that they work in Sisters, and 90% were homeowners. On the right there, you see a timeline of participation, which is pretty typical of this kind of process. You launch the online open house, and you see a big spike in activity, and then the other spikes pretty much correspond with email reminders sent out, you know, hey, remember to come fill this out. So overall, I think we did a, we had a good amount of participation there. It was really exciting to see. In terms of what we heard from folks, so we asked, you know, we had our five alternatives of urban growth boundary locations that we talked about, and we asked people, you know, how well, what's your overall opinion of these alternatives? And so the chart on the right kind of shows everything from very good, which is the deep green, to good, to neutral, which is kind of the very pale green. So those, you can see that kind of bright green line. That's where either folks, how many folks said either very good, good, or neutral? So we got a lot more support for alternatives 1 and 5 than 4, 2, 3, and 4. Not very many people said that those were good at all, and I don't think that is too surprising if you take a look at the maps there. Next slide. And we asked folks to dig in a little bit on those goal 14 criteria, and we asked a number of questions kind of specifically about how well do you think this alternative does in terms of these criteria? So in this chart, you'll see alternative 1 is the blue, and alternative 5 is kind of the deep green. So each of these questions, it's, you know, alternative 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And you see that alternatives 1 and 5 scored much higher than the others on criteria of efficient use of land, or housing variety and affordability, protecting natural resources, avoiding natural hazards, protecting farms and forests, property owners' desires, efficient use, efficient provision of public services, and economic development opportunities. Just across the board, people thought that 1 and 5 did much better. Next slide. And there were a number of open-ended comments, and I think in part B of your packet, we provided a full printout of all of these, but our kind of consolidation of the themes there was a clear need for affordable and workforce housing, concerns about development near the airport. Lots of folks said that there wasn't any need to grow at all, or didn't want to see any additional traffic on, or pressure on kind of transportation and other infrastructure. Lots of folks said we need to protect wildlife and natural resource areas. A number of folks said that they supported the process, and they thought that the city was doing a good job with communication and engagement so far. There was concerns over wildfire issues and availability of water kind of at a regional level. Lots of folks said we should consider a hybrid alternative, and potentially consider it be McKenzie Meadows Village property in one of these alternatives. Like I said, alternatives 1 and 5 were much more popular than 2, 3, and 4. We should focus on infill and prioritize close-in and vacant properties, similar to what we heard in the in-person event. And I think that concludes, yeah, just kind of a real quick overview of the open houses, online and in person. And I believe now we'll pause for discussion and public comment.
Any questions on any of the material that was presented, or any observations? Anybody wants to share right now? Or is it?
When we had our previous meeting, we talked about a hybrid, maybe of 1 and combining the best parts of 1 and 5 together. So instead of, because, you know, they're kind of arbitrary to pick what goes into 5, what goes into 1. So I don't know if any, we've had time to do any of that since, or?
No, there have been no changes to the alternatives. We're still kind of making sure that, getting all the boards and commissions and council the opportunity to, and the public to weigh in before we make any changes to the alternatives. So we'll kind of synthesize all this information, the feedback we get back, get, and then we'll come back through those, that same process for a, probably present more of a draft preferred alternative, or A and B, as you were mentioning, potentially two of them for the next round of review. But we haven't made any changes from the steering committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
But that will be the next step, is to come up with a preferred alternative. And likely will not be exactly 1 or exactly 5, it will be some kind of combination. I mean, I think almost assuredly, but we can't tell you exactly what that looks like yet, as Scott said.
I had a comment on the open, open comment part of that, and I just thought, maybe for the public's edification, it would be nice to have some of the most frequently asked questions and answers to them, especially things like fire, water, state mandate, just so the public can easily, because I saw those again and again, and if you read the packets and you're familiar with the process, you've gone through them, but sometimes they're buried pretty far down in there. Might be nice to bring it out on a high level so that, you know, because you see those comments again and again, the public could see it and, you know, be a little more informed easily.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
No, thank you for that comment. We have, it probably doesn't get enough publicity, and we need to publicize it more, but we do have an FAQ section on the website, and it probably needs an updating for some of the-
Yeah, with some of those good, open-ended comments from the open house, which, you know, they're kind of grouped in there.
That's a good suggestion, and we probably need to take another run-through on there to make sure it's up to date. And then, and then point people more and more to it, so, yeah. Anything else? Pretty self-explanatory, straightforward? Okay. Because we're ready to move on to the next step in the agenda, if that's the case?
Okay.
The public comment?
Well, I know, I'm looking to see what I'm-
The public comment section.
So, yes, public comments.
Yeah.
We have time for public comments. We've got a list here, and Charlie, I think you were first, if you'd like to state your name and address up at the podium.
Would you turn that microphone on? Thank you.
And just a reminder, Chair, that we probably, make sure you want to query folks on Zoom if they want to make any comment after, after the folks in the audience.
Good afternoon, I'll be quick here, I gotta go get the horses in. But there are two issues that have come up that are recent, that I'm gonna write them down and I'll submit them. But there are two rather important things that I noticed. One was, on the 22nd, the city council had a presentation from an economics consultant that showed us the population and employment statistics for Sisters. And in slide 4 of that presentation, it shows the population line, and it shows the bar chart of population increase percent from year to year, from 1990. So what you see is, between 2000 and 2020, our population grew by three times, 1,000 to 3,000 people inside the city limits. That's a 5.65% average compounded growth rate, which is pretty severe. However, in 2021, 22, and 23, the last dates that were, where data was available, the population leveled off. In one year, it's kind of in the noise, the numbers are in the noise, but it actually declined. So my question is, undergirding all of this, is which line is going to continue? Are we going to resume the 5.65% or something less than that? Or is the flat line going to continue? And so, since it's pretty important as to how much land you're going to bring in, it seems to me it would merit some investigation of why that happened. I have some ideas, I'll write them down and submit them, I'm not going to take the time today. But the, one of those reasons might be fire. The Los Angeles fires kind of really got an awful lot of conversation going, and in part of my other work, I listen, I pay attention to those things around the planet, especially here in the US. And an insurance, a very high-level insurance executive was being interviewed, and he said, you know, in the old days, we used to assume total loss in places like Los Angeles every 100 to 200 years. He says now it's about 30 to 40 years. And if you run the number on that, in other words, they're gonna have to pay out for a total loss at, in theory, at that market value in that year, every 30 or 40 years. At 40 years, and a $750,000 house, which is below the median around here, it would take $1,200 to $1,500 a month to pay the insurance bill. $15,000 to $18,000 a year, at a total loss every 40 years. So what's happening is it's easing up the real estate market in some places, because if you, I'll add the other popular, this is more relevant, because I had a conversation with a homeowner in Trapper Point, in the Trapper Point neighborhood. And he said he was talking to his insurance agent about upgrading his insurance to rent out his ADU on a long-term rental. Right now, it's being used by family when they visit. The insurance agent told him, he said, I wouldn't touch your insurance policy at all right now, because if you touch it, they will cancel it. Or if they bring you back a policy at all, you won't be able to afford it. So he said, from now on, if a house sells, or you change the use of the house at all, and you have to change your insurance policy, you may or may not get another one. If you're in a high-fire risk area, and they have all been notified in Trapper Point that they are now in a high-fire risk area. So what I'm saying is, it makes a difference, I think, in which direction we expand into. If you expand into the direction in which the fires are likely to come, maybe that's not the best direction to expand into. Or at least pay very attention, very much attention to what the fire risk is said to be. And I'm not saying it's even resolved right now. I think there's a lot of movement in that still going on. What I'm saying is, the numbers are $1,200 to $1,500 a month coming from some of the top insurance executives, and that's no small number, and it's no small impact on housing affordability. Or commercial building affordability, for that matter, you know, you got to insure the commercial buildings too, and the industrial buildings. So everybody's insurance, and short of a federal program, similar to the flood insurance program, stepping in and assuming some of the risk, which could happen, things could be really dicey for people who live in a high-fire risk area, and we certainly don't want to exacerbate that. So thank you very much for listening. I'll write that all down and send it in, and I'll keep, I'm getting new information on this stuff pretty much every week in my other work.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
This writing is kind of hard to read. Is it Daryl, or?
Eric.
Eric.
So Walsh, you want to go first? Because I think I'm going to think this all the way.
Okay. Ben?
My name is Ben Walsh. I went through elementary school here, I started kindergarten-
Oh, your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I live in Portland.
Okay.
Do you want my, the address is on the slip, but I live in Portland. My-
Okay.
My mom still lives in the house that I grew up in, which is in Parrot Huntington. So I think that's Barclay Meadows First Edition, something like that. So I got a couple things to say, and of course, they're all related to each other, but they're separate in some ways. So I think, I think the first thing I want to say is that it seems to me that the mandated UGB amendment process is, it's coinciding with what I, I think there's pretty broad agreement about, that there's a really pressing need for supply and affordability in the Sisters housing market. And I just, I think it's important to sort of state into the process, at least my perception, that those two things are really separate, right? The UGB amendment process has come around as a matter of, I don't know, state mandate, obligation to state law, and really, everybody knows, you know, both historically, anecdotally, and maybe even structurally, intentionally, that's a really slow process. It's intended to be methodical and thoughtful. We've heard MIG say, you know, that it doesn't entail any, like, compulsory development, you know, that annexations following UGB expansion are voluntary, they are initiated by property owners, et cetera. And so I think the, the fact that those two things are coinciding right now is tending to push them together in the conversation. And it may or may not be the case that that's the best thing for the community, because there is a really pressing need for supply and affordability, as everybody, I think, seems to agree. And that maybe the UGB process isn't the best mechanism to address that. There, I think, in some of the LCD, or was this CL, how's it called now, Land Conservation and Development, you know, there aren't, I think, review criteria, at least that I'm aware from, from the consultants' presentations that speak to speed, you know, there are some viability questions with respect to development, but they don't really, those processes aren't really focused on speed and assuring affordability. And so in some ways, that, those really pressing considerations for the community don't seem to enter into the UGB process very well. So I, a few things I want to say then about that. My impression is, and by most accounts, the UGB amendment process to date has been really exemplary. Like, the city, the community has really stepped forward. It's been robustly attended and lots of engagement. And I would, you know, I want a laud, the city for that, and I want to encourage the city really strongly to proceed with the process. And I make that point because, of course, there's been conversation recently about delaying that process to be able to consider a piece of ground that hasn't been available to consider. Of course, that's the McKenzie Meadows Village, subject of the request for a zone change at the county. And I think there's been really understandable sentiment in the community to see if there's a way to consider that piece, because right on its face, it offers a lot. And I guess what I would say is that, as far as I'm aware, feedback at the county to date is almost unanimously opposed to it. And that simply suggests that it may not be as expeditious a process for the county as might benefit the community. I do think, as the planning, as the steering committee said last week, that the city council would serve the community well to request of the county expedited review. My own view is that the city could probably remain neutral, you know, about the reasons. There was some conversation about saying to the county, please expedite this, because if it were available for us, we'd like to consider it, because it looks very promising. That, that may help the community, it may not be important, maybe it's simpler for the city just to say to the county, would you please expedite this? Leave the statement there. But I, I want strongly, given the sort of easily foreseeable complications to that zone change process at the county, I want to really urge the city to move forward with the UGB process, as it has been laid out and as it has been progressing, because it's been really solid and well-done. And I guess there are two more things that I will say. It seems to me that in some of the communications, both to the city and to the county, from the McKenzie Meadows Village, could be for a series of different reasons, there have been some characterizations of other pieces of property that are under consideration, other parts of town that are under consideration in the various alternatives. For example, I believe it was the Community Engagement Director of Hayton Homes offered the observation that fire maps, and this is very much to Charlie's point, even though he left, fire maps say that some of the Barclay Meadows Edition, or some of the Barclay original Brooks subdivision stuff is in an extreme fire hazard zone, and that the McKenzie Meadows Village is in a moderate fire hazard zone. And I don't know the basis of those maps, I don't know exactly how those conclusions were drawn, but I think for anybody that's on the ground, those sort of immediately raise some questions about, is that really the case? Just on its face, it would seem fire hazard is higher in the forests to the west of town than it is what is effectively downwind from town, not in forested land. So I think, I want to say, as a person who grew up in the Parrot Huntington, you know, what's referred to as Parrot Huntington neighborhood, a couple of things. One, I heard one of my parents' neighbors, neighbor of the property that I grew up on, last week say, and he's gonna stand up and speak, that the meadow in Barclay is really special and needs to be protected, and I wholeheartedly share that opinion. And it is, it's no small thing to have grown up there with a flooding willow marsh and frogs and the nesting-
Ben, could you wrap it up? We're in the-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Those, that part of town is developable. It's been characterized as virtually impossible to imagine it being subdivided or developed. And as somebody who grew up there and has seen it change, that's not impossible for me to imagine. I think it's probably in the best interest of the community. So I guess, I guess I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Eric Wattenberg, 69015 Barclay Court, which is just over here on the edge of the meadow. I spoke last week to the committee, thank you for that time. Complimented Scott, he's doing a great job. I'm the one that made the comment that meadow should be protected at all costs. And somebody on the committee, later in the meeting, made that statement that perhaps the city should include that meadow so they can be in control of protecting it. How that works, I don't know. It's a wildlife corridor, it's a flood plain, that should be done, I'll leave it at that. My comments here today are going to be more focused after participating or watching the whole meeting last week. I was really struck at how the squirrels were running around, and the whole, the whole momentum of that meeting got shifted towards Bill Willetts and McKenzie Meadows. And it struck me, right on the surface, it's patently unfair to come in at the 11th hour and say, hell, let's hold this whole thing up, and let me see if I can get my zoning changed in over here, and bring that land in. How his land got zoned, or designated as moderate fire risk, where my property on the edge of the meadow with a few pine trees on the one edge of it, and a complete meadow was high-risk, I don't know- risk, I don't know. I haven't done that yet. I'm going to appeal that to the state. Anybody with any common sense knows that anything on the west side of town is high risk. The fire's going to come in from there, the wind's going to blow down the hill unless it's what burned the Mackenzie River Canyon, where the winds came out of the east. Typically, the winds come out of the west, they're going to come down slope, they are going to burn town. Blackbeet Meadows came very, very close to being burned long before I got here, but with that B and B fire, they were very, very lucky. It just didn't sweep right through them. They will burn someday. They will be the next Southern California. And when they burn, City of Sisters will burn. All of the trees you've left, even in the woodland subdivision. And I laugh there, some of the big trees they left are now dying because of what they did underground. How you can put that woodlands in, call it affordable housing, they're $800,000 homes, you put it in the middle of town, the easiest place to put accessible, affordable housing, and look what you did there. Look what happened at the airport over here. I've been here for 15 years, but I haven't been paying attention on this level until now, because I'm involved in it. All of that so-called industrial land over here, you put houses on. Now you're screaming you don't have anywhere to put light industrial business. Well, you, you don't see the forest for the trees. And as the planning commission, if you really want to spend some time going outside the UGB process, where is your next highway bypass going to go? It's coming. Look what's happened in Bend. They have spent 100 times what they would have spent if they'd have planned ahead 30 years ago, before they tried to put the parkway coming through, that expansion on the north end of town. Highway 20 is a two-lane highway, and it drains the whole Willamette Valley into Central Oregon. As Central Oregon grows, it's all going to come through here, not much over Mount Hood, unless they live in the north part of the county and up in Jefferson County. Where is that traffic going to go? Everybody in Sisters wants it to go right through town, so people will stop and shop. Nobody does that. The people that are going to stop and shop here, they know it. They're going to pull off the highway and park. Well, where is your bypass going to go? 30 years ago, it could have gone through over here past the airport and through my property and around town, but you've already built everything out there now. The only place left is to go west of town. Well, guess what? Mr. Willetts' property is right where that highway needs to go. So do you want to put houses and subdivisions out there? Where is your highway going to go someday? So as a planning commission, I think you need to really be looking at the bigger picture. UGB is one thing. It's a little bit piece of what you really need to be thinking about. Any bypass highway is going to start now out by the rodeo grounds, it's going to come in on the Harrington Loop, it's going to go around town, around past the Sura Ponds, it's going to go out west to the high school, and where's it going to come back into the highway? Are you going to keep going west all the way around behind Tollgate? Or are you going to duck back in around the high school and go right through Mr. Willetts' property? So I'm not picking sides on Mr. Willetts, and I really think it's unfair for him to interject and suggest that you need to hold up your UGB process for him. He's had decades or more to do this, and he's already had a windfall in Mackenzie Meadows as it is. What about everybody over here that's been waiting for 30 years, and that area to the west of here, or to the east of here, should be where the development first starts and infill? I think I will leave it at that. Oh, except that, and Mr. Walsh commented on it. I think the way you have characterized the potential for development over here in Priority One with all the properties, mine included, I think is misguided. There are a lot of property owners who are waiting for this. They have a nice house on 10 acres, but they've been waiting for their retirement to subdivide their property, come into the city, be developed. So there's a good portion of this over here that's perfectly developable, but from the meadow and out into the meadow, that's a whole separate issue. But don't throw everybody in the one box and say that all of us property owners over here in this Priority One zone are not prime candidates to be brought into the UGB, brought into the city, and subdivided and developed. There's a lot of property over there that can do that very easily. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you haven't talked to any of the property owners over there, me included. Nobody has approached us. It's only when we approached the city. So I think you're at the point now where you need to personally talk with every one of those property owners and see, what do you think about the UGB and the city? Are you willing to be a part of it or not? Are you going to put up a big fight, or do you wish this would come in? I think that's really missing in this process now, too.
Thank you.
Hey, Sharon Booth.
In the spirit of time and getting through our agenda, just would request that people, if you could, keep your comments to three minutes or less, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Sharon Booth, and I live at 69453 Lasso in Sisters. And even though technically we're supposed to be talking about the UGB, it's become completely inextricably involved with the rezoning request for that 58 acres north of the current Mackenzie Meadows development. So I'd just like to briefly highlight several reasons why rezoning those 58 acres would be a really bad idea, and the thought that the develop, well, that the, sorry, the steering committee has now made approval of that zoning request, a first step in the UGB development plan, is very disturbing. If now the steering committee says, well, the city should tell the county to really quickly expedite this rezoning request, I think we have to slow down the process and think more carefully about that. So I'd like to briefly highlight several reasons why rezoning those 58 acres would be a very bad idea. It would irrevocably impact the F2 Forest, which is being requested to be rezoned. Okay, briefly, the forest in that proposed area is home to special species of birds and plants, rare and of concern, used by migrating mule deer, which are already shrinking in number. In fact, this habitat is so special that the Trout Creek Nature Preserve, which is immediately adjacent to the 58 acres, so it would share a boundary between the new development, which is the rezoned area, with the current Trout Creek Nature Preserve. And it was set aside by the school district, which they currently own those acres of the natural preserve, so that it could be available for use by the high school curriculum for its students to learn about habitat and managing it as part of their regular biology curriculum. The Sisters Trail Alliance said also has an easement through the preserve for walking and cycling, which is very popular and would be greatly missed, and the access from the high-density residential area being proposed, which again, has become a critical part of the UGB recommendations to be expedited, that would expose the preserve to a much higher density adjacent population based on, due to expansion of the Mackenzie Meadows development. Those 58 acres are home to several very special birds, and I won't go into excessive detail, but the white-headed woodpecker uses the area for nesting, the flamulated owl is rare and a spectacular forest dweller here. A beautiful variety of wildflower in the pentstemon family is found only in this region in all of central Oregon. Trout Creek Preserve also serves as a seasonal overflow for that part of the flood plain, which would be affected by a new high-density development on those 58 acres.
Okay, are you about finished there?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
And also, there's always that issue of wildfire risk, which increases with higher density human habitation. So in summary, rezoning these 58 acres of such natural value will threaten the species that live there, diminish the recreational values for all local residents. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hey, Scott, I just want to call out that there's people attending over Zoom.
Yes, is there anyone?
Okay, well, I'm going to ask that anyone attending over Zoom, there's an option on Zoom where you can use the raised hand button, and if I see anyone who clicks that button, raises their hand, I will call on you and give you permissions to speak. But if I don't see anyone use that raised hand icon, then I will assume that no one over Zoom wants to provide comments at this time.
Can you just reiterate where that raised hand button is for folks if they don't know where it is?
Yeah, people can find that raised hand button at the bottom of their Zoom window. It looks like a little hand, it'll pop up on that black bar on the bottom. Okay, seeing no one raising their hand over Zoom.
Okay, I think we're ready to proceed.
Scott or Chair? I see someone in the audience raising their hand.
If you'd like to. Rob John?
John T. Han, Sisters, Oregon, live at 510 Cowboy. I just wanted to make a comment about the gal that just spoke in relationship to the article that was in the paper. And that, that article was misleading, and that was not what the vote was that we took. We voted, I'm not sure if I explained it really correctly, but we did not vote to move forward with any annexation of the property. We voted to speed up the process of having the planning commission and the city council to, to move that forward with expediting the process. And I don't, I think it was misrepresented, so I think we'll try and get that straightened out with, with the nugget. And I know that there's three of us here, actually four, four of us here today that were at that, at that meeting. So anyway, I just wanted to help her out about that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along here. We'll talk next about the, the actual proposal for the rezone on those properties owned by Mackenzie Meadows Village, and we have a little bit of a presentation to kind of review what's being proposed and what potential implication that has on the urban growth boundary amendment process. The steering committee will provide some overview of what the steering committee recommended and get the planning commission's take on it, and then we'll, next week, we'll bring it up with the council and see what the council wants to do, what kind of direction do we want to go based on that. So we'll, we've thrown out some different options, and maybe at this, this point, Andrew or Matt, it would be good to go through the slides we have on this, and then we could have that discussion.
Yep, I'm going to cover these, this set of slides, and then if Andrew's still here, he'll cover the next set of slides. But yes, we'll talk about this, we'll give you our best, you know, information about the status as we understand it, let you know what we heard from the steering committee last week. So some of this has already been talked about, but we'll kind of give you our take on it in terms of how it fits into or could fit into the UGB process. So as a lot of you know, there's a request to rezone this property from forest designation to mixed-use agriculture, and the intent behind that request, we understand, is to allow that property to be considered alongside and in essentially the same bucket as the other priority, or as the priority land that we're looking at, basically to the northeast of the city now, the properties we've been focusing on and will focus on when we go through the evaluation part of this presentation. This is a county process, so the county needs to review this. It will include a public hearing process. There's not, because it's a legislative process, there's not a time limit on this process, but there are specific criteria for the county in terms of how, whether or not they approve this. We don't know exactly how long this is going to take. We do know that, you know, folks, that the applicants are hoping to expedite this process and have asked both the city and the steering committee to make a similar recommendation. We are assuming that this could take five to eight months, and then this, the decision could be appealed, whether it's approved or denied, it could be appealed, and that could potentially add more time to the process. So that's just kind of our best guesses in terms of the timeline for the process. We will say, because we have looked, we've got this larger study area that encompasses more than just those existing priority lands, and we have done, you know, initial evaluation of everything in the study area, and we do know that from a number of perspectives or for a number of criteria, this property would score well compared to some of the other land in the Priority One area, given the size, given the fact that it is purely vacant, given the fact that, you know, there are transportation facilities that connect to this property. So it, it would end up with a fairly high score in comparison to other properties. But obviously, you know, the schedule implications for this UGB process, were we to kind of wait for this decision to be made? They're not totally clear, but it would add at least several months to the process. And what we've heard from the state is that this property really can't be considered alongside those other Priority One areas until a rezone is approved. And so, you know, that's sort of the status of that. So we presented, you know, we think it's important to just have this information out there and to talk to you all, and we talked to the steering committee about this last week, and as Scott said, we'll talk to the council about it when we meet with them. We identified a couple of options and a suboption for the steering committee to weigh in on when we met last week with them. One was to just keep going as planned, not wait for this rezoning process to play out, and just continue towards coming up with a preferred alternative with only, with the focus on those Priority One lands, unless they are not adequate to meet the capacity needed to expand the UGB. Then we can start to look at lower priority lands. Option B would be to wait for the county rezone hearing, and if the rezone is successful, then consider this alongside the other Priority One lands. This would not, you know, come close to meeting the entire capacity need. The entire capacity need is, you know, for approximately 250 developable acres. The expansion is going to be larger than that, because we need developable acres, and some of these properties, you know, are not completely developable. So there's still going to be the need, even if this were a part of the preferred alternative, there would be the need for land in the Priority One, existing Priority One area. We had kind of a, option B2, which said, let's continue with the evaluation process, let's identify a couple of preferred alternative options. One would be assuming this rezone goes through, and this was considered a Priority One area, and the other would be develop a preferred option that doesn't, wouldn't include this property. And then we, so we talked to the steering committee. What we heard from the steering committee was that there's interest in evaluating this property along with the other priority lands, if it, Priority One lands, if it was successfully rezoned, but they did not want to hold up this process, you know, for some indefinite period of time. And so if we were to move forward with that option B2, that there should be some kind of time limit, you know, on that. And they didn't specify a sort of a single number, but I think what I heard was six to 12 months, something like that. So that's my understanding of the conversation, and Scott or Andrew or members of the planning commission who were there, you know, feel free to add, add to that. I don't think there was a recommendation one way or another, nor was there consensus on the request for the steering committee to recommend expediting the rezone process. That's my understanding on that. But again, I missed that part of the meeting, so others should weigh in on that.
Thanks, Matt. I'll try to clarify, clarify that since you might have left. There, there was support for the city to write a letter, the council to write a letter to expedite, but just to get to a decision sooner. And then there was some discussion about whether the steering committee should recommend support of the rezone or not, and that's where there was not, there was not consensus on whether to support it or not, but just to get to a decision. And any members of the steering committee who are there, here in attendance, if you heard differently, then please chime in, but that's, that's kind of what.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I knew you would be able to clarify that. Thanks. So I think, you know, we're interested in planning commission's take on this, you know, in light of what the steering, steering committee had recommended. And then after, so I think we were looking to have a little discussion about this and then move forward and talk about the results of the evaluation so far, unless, Scott, you want us to, like, move forward with more of the presentation and come back to this. I think it's up to you and the planning commission.
Um I guess the chair uh put it to the chair. Do you want to have some discussion on this and kind of see what the planning commission's kind of general consensus?
Yeah, if it's a short discussion, I I mean um let's give it 10 minutes and see.
Okay.
Eli, did you have a comment?
Yeah, is there an advice from either Scott or the as to a time limit that would not affect the current process, the UGB process? I like that idea. I just want to know what the.
I don't, uh Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh I think from what Tony is telling us, that the minimum amount of time that it could take is five to six months. And I think that would at least add on three to three months to our to our process at a minimum.
Yeah, that's what I would say too. I don't think there's any amount of time that wouldn't have some impact on our schedule. I mean, um because we had assumed, you know, we would get to a preferred alternative in the next couple of months. So I think, like Scott said, at a minimum, you know, even i- if it would be three or four months added on to the process. I think, you know, we we can go forward with that sort of option to be, but then we'd be kind of waiting for whatever that period might be. And if we put that kind of time limit of limit of six months, well, then, you know, it wouldn't impact us by more than probably three or four months. But we'd have to just see what happened then. So yeah, not a perfect answer, but that's what I would say too.
Great.
Yeah, I'm in favor of some option that involves waiting.
Are there consequences for us waiting? And if there, can can we, is there any, is there any avenue that guarantees us that it'll only be six months? We get to the end of the six months, now it's gonna be another four months, and it's gonna be two more months. Is is there anything like that?
I do not think there is. I mean, I can't speak for the county, um but I don't think there's any way to sort of guarantee that the process only takes a certain amount of time.
I think we were planning on moving ahead, at least the steering committee's recommendation with the the normal process and kind of having this in the back pocket. If it did, if something developed, it came up, if it looked like it was gonna get.
If it was gonna be there in time.
Yeah, and if it looked like it was gonna go on and on, that would change.
Then we could, we can redirect.
Yeah.
Okay.
At least that's what I thought.
That's correct. That's what I recall. And just to answer your first question, there's really no down downside, I guess, other than maybe losing some momentum in the process. Having everybody kind of at their attention and, you know, then potential, well, and if if another kind of uh piece of information is is if the rezone were successful and uh the uh steering committee and the planning commission, the council wanted to consider those lands for inclusion, we would need to take some more time to reach out to the public to let them know, because the the subject of all the open houses were alternatives one through five. And if we were to be adding another alternative, we'd need to go out and get that feedback. So it would, I guess that's just more time to the process.
Are we exposing ourselves to litigation?
I don't believe we are, because I don't think we're any under any artificial timelines. Um but I can't answer that question completely 100% sure, but nothing that I would be aware of.
I'm not aware of anything either. I always like to say I am not a land use attorney. So that's a good question for your your legal counsel. But I think just by by putting a pause or saying, hey, you know, we're gonna wait to recommend a decide on a preferred alternative until we see if this happens. I don't think there's, as Scott said, there's not some timeframe or legal or statutory requirement that you make this decision by a certain time. So it doesn't feel to me like it would, but again, I am not a land use attorney.
My my experience, having gone through this before with the rezoning, was that it it takes a lot longer than anybody thinks it's going to. And the six months turned into two years.
Yeah, I'd like to throw in a Super Bowl analogy, since it's that week. It's the middle of the fourth quarter. It's third down. Um that we may have to punt down the road, but we don't know yet. There's a couple, there's a player or two before then. But I think it's um, you know, the steering committee thought about it and actually talked about it quite a long time. And I think um, you know, having both options at this point is 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 actually pretty good. But who knows, two year, two months down the road, four months, we might have to shift gears. Who knows?
Yeah, if we hear something from the county saying, oh, wow, this is gonna take a while or
Yeah.
then, you know, we can change.
It's gonna go indefinite forever. I think six to 12 months is is as good as we could guess right now. And then, you know, I I think that council want to weigh in when it comes before us to about the the same timeframes and stuff like that. We might have even zero it in a little more. I don't know.
Want to chime in. I feel pretty strongly that we shouldn't delay our process, the UGB process specifically for this property. Um just from what I'm understanding, I'm worried about giving partial preference to a specific property owner. Um when this could have happened, you know, five years ago, they could have done this rezone. And so it feels to me, I just don't want to give partial preference. And I don't think that the us as a city or our planning commission should give um an opinion on whether we should want it to be rezoned or not. If we're asking to expedite, I feel like I'm okay with that, but.
Yeah, can I can I comment on that real quick? Um John Tehan and Bill Willetts are both on the steering committee, on the UGB steering committee. Um and they were both brought on because A, Bill Willetts had been involved in that process a long time ago in 2005. And John Tehan was also involved in that process, but one got in and one didn't. So we really wanted, when we were choosing the UGB steering committee, we chose people of all different feathers, right, representation. So um that was thought of uh well ahead of time. And was, you know, they were invited to be part of the um application process. And then when we went through the application process, they kind of um were easy to choose because they were both had done this before. And as a matter of fact, of all the people in town that have been through a UGB process, these these two people know it the best. Um more than the rest of us. Uh I don't even know if anybody else working for the city, except for maybe Carol, uh was actually uh working for the city back at the time. So uh and maybe Paul, but um it was definitely a targeted uh thing. We also have people on the other end of the spectrum that are also on the steering committee that um when they applied, didn't even want to consider the UGB. Um so we, what we did was we put this wide spectrum of people on it, so they could, we could consider all avenues. And so uh, you know, the the actual rezoning didn't come into play until much longer after we started this process, obviously. And I um I tend to agree with you. Uh there's there's no real waiting other than we'll just keep it. I think what was considered is just to keep it open until we're we're gonna know yea or nay pretty pretty soon. And uh at that point, then we'll make that decision, whether, well, I don't know if we'll be in a place to wait for it or not, but we'll we'll figure it out as a group, as a community. So, but I appreciate your concern. I mean, it's you're not the only one.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't know that they were on the steering committee as well, which which feels a bit.
Yeah, um I'd like to make a comment too. I actually um agree, you know, I've had time to mull over. I'm also on the UGB steering committee. And I felt a little rushed in our meeting last week, and I think we all agree that we don't want to delay this process because this is something we need to do. And I really want to get more information on a process that Mayor Letts had where you can have like a one-time expansion. I feel like this property, as it's going through this rezoning, whether it happens or not, seems like a good candidate for that kind of process. Since it's not in the priority one lands now, it may be in six months, a year, two years. And maybe that's a time for the city to consider it. I think, you know, we have the consultants, we can do some of the analyses and understand more about this property that might help in the future, like, hey, if this property does get rezoned, we already have some information, we can, you know, I'm sure you have to redo everything, but um you know, I I'm also very hesitant to want to slow down the process very much. Um with, at the same time, you know, we don't want a property to come in a month after we make our decision and then everyone's really mad at us. But I I'm a little nervous that the process is gonna take a lot more than six months, that it's gonna be more on the two years. I've also read some of the public comments for to the county, and I think it might be a longer decision than um the UGB process that we have lined up right now.
So you're more in favor of option B then?
Or option A maybe.
A, okay.
Yeah, I I was more in favor of B two at our last meeting, but you know, I've had a little time to think about it. And I'm just a little nervous about the length of time. And I'd also like to just learn more about that other process. You know, maybe this property could become part of the city, but maybe not through this you, this particular UGB process.
Next question was, what's the process for a property like that? Yeah. There is a pro, there is a, there is a process, right? If they don't get, uh if it doesn't happen in time for this for this property, there is a way for them to become part of the city at a later date without a UGB expansion? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, there's a one-time exclusion, I think that was just passed.
There's, there's a, there's a, I think Senate Bill 53, 1537 or what's that? Yeah, that that legislature created just recently for to try to uh make it easier for communities to expand their urban growth boundary, to get housing built quicker to address the affordable housing need. So there are some criteria that you have to meet to be able to be eligible for that. And I think the city, it's at the discretion of the city to create that process. And you have to provide uh 30% affordable housing. There's some affordable housing requirements. Um so there's the potential, there, I think if they meet that criteria and the city wants to go to open that process up, there is a potential opportunity there for them to take advantage of it uh later.
I feel like to your point, um you could also do option but B two and just give them a really tight timeline, right? And it's like, you have to hit the timeline. If you can't hit the timeline, we're moving on. And then you have, you've covered your bases, but I I'm agreeing with you.
In the final analysis, if our goal is to create supply and affordable housing, I mean, i- it seems to me that these options east of town might take longer than an option that's there that someone actually wants to develop in the near future. So if our goal is speed, how do we get people who are either priced out of the area or unhoused and maybe wanting to get into something, you know, entry level? Um I mean, waiting six months, you're not waiting 10 years, might be better. Um I, that's just a thought. I'm kind of more in favor of one of the B options personally. Um all the other concerns are well taken, you know.
I think we talked about a B option with a time time limit.
It just, it's, it sounds like there's someone who's ready to develop. And I I understand, maybe there's a windfall for somebody, maybe it's not fair, I don't know. But um it's near the schools, it's a point of entry for young families, you know.
Well, they also were talking about a a 30%.
Right, right.
Affordable housing.
Right, which is, you know.
Does anyone know why they didn't already request rezoning, what their idea was for this property? Is that a stupid question?
Well, yeah, I think I I'm assuming that they thought all along they were gonna, I don't know why it it wasn't started a while ago, to be honest.
I think they thought they were eligible as priority one lands, but
Okay.
Maybe, maybe came to that realization as the process started, that their lands were not.
Too, right? I mean, there's not much development. You can do some single-family stuff, right? Can't do much, right?
In the county, you mean?
Yeah.
Would it have anything to do with the neighborhood south of it being developed, like waiting for that to be developed makes it more likely to be approved for rezoning?
Just so you know, F two, if it stayed F two, you're only allowed one, one home on the whole property, and it's 58 acres or whatever, so.
Yeah, so it wouldn't make any sense.
I will say, I wasn't gonna say this, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it. There's, there's neighborhoods down in Bend that have been brought in on the, on the exception land, uh UGB expansion. And they're doing 30% requirements and they're having a hard time financially making it. So um I'm not sure there's a whole lot of windfall when you're building 30% affordable housing. It's, it gets really tight and almost impossible for somebody to actually do that. So um I'm not using that as an as an emotional thing. I just think that when you're looking at um if you're, if you're doing a market rate housing, your margins are fairly big. When you're doing some affordable housing, it reduces um profit margins. If you're doing 30% affordable housing, if you have somebody on board, such as Hayden Homes or anybody that even says they can do it, that's kind of a windfall all by itself, because just having it created. That's, I'm in the industry, so I know.
And we're talking workforce housing, not not specifically uh, you know, below market where it's subsidized. We're talking workforce housing.
That's what we got offered at Wood Hill too, or Woodland, workforce housing that's 800, which we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
So it it doesn't, I mean, it works once until the resale comes.
Well, when you do the annexation, you can, you can write a contract when you do the annexation, which didn't happen.
That that is correct.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, you'd want to make, you'd want to dot your i's and question p's.
Exactly.
So what's the consent? Is there more thoughts on here before we kind of take a, uh we need to keep moving. We got a full agenda here. And we kind of got bogged down in this with the steering committee. We want to make sure you have enough time to kind of have comments on the alternative uh report as well. So um I don't know if you want to. Yeah.
Um I think it's really hard to predict what developers are gonna develop moving into the future. Um and having worked as an architect in affordable housing, I know that there are a lot of funding hoops that you have to go through as a developer, specifically for 30%, 60%, 80%, whatever it is. And I think there's a lot of unknown right now with funding, because a lot of it comes from state and federal places. Um so it's hard to predict what's gonna happen with developers in the future and what things are gonna be tying together to create that funding for affordability. Um that's just from my experience.
Well, from what I understood at the steering committee, they weren't, they weren't going for funding. They were, they were talking about selling the the land to Habitat and Hayden at a, at a low enough price that it could be, that it would pencil.
Okay.
That was their intentions?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for discussion sake.
So is there, I've heard some support for just staying on track uh with the process that we're are going on. I've heard some some discussion about maybe continuing to go uh or being open to the uh hearing what the outcome of the rezone is, but with a certain timeframe, so it doesn't keep going forever. Um is there, is there any other thoughts? Is there, is there a way to, do we want to take a straw poll here, just so we can kind of get moving and make a recognition to council? And obviously, council's gonna be the one to have to make the call.
Eli, let's start with you and work around.
In favor of a B two option with a tighter timeline?
Such as?
Four months. Puts us within the timeframe of acceptability with the current UGB timeline.
Rick?
I like the B option, you know, we need to move forward, but like you said, it's developable, it's gonna be, he's already ready to go on it. And so the odds of getting, you know, better priced housing or lower cost housing is a lot stronger with that 58 acres there than it is over here behind us or behind me. So, you know, proceeding along with what we're doing, but kind of having that in our pocket if it happens to come in soon enough. But if not, there's always that exception, the House bill or Senate bill 1573, 1573?
1337.
37, damn it.
Dyslexic.
Dyslexic, yes. Um, you know, so they can always, you know, we can exercise that if we need to or if we want to. But this, this seven, this 58 acres, I think, was always planned, the developer always planned for it to be there. That's why they they installed the plumbing right up to the red line. There there's roads and, you know, uh sewer and water and all that.
And even though that, which is true, of course that was, but but the city requires you to do that, to build all the, all the utilities all the way to the, to the edge of your property. So when the next developer comes, they don't have to go back in your property. But to your point, yeah.
Okay.
Very ready.
Yeah.
Anna?
Hey, I think I will go with B two, but a short timeline, like four to six months. I don't think we should significantly delay the process. You know, if everything goes great and it comes in, you know, in a couple of months, great, but.
Uh I I should see what happens with the rezone personally. Um, you know, with the timeline, I think that was, was it six to 12 months? I'm I'm kind of more in favor of just seeing what happens with it first, because that's a pretty significant hinge point there is yea or nay, whether it'll be an option.
I, my, my opinion would be a B option with the with the short timeline, maybe six months. And then knowing that the city may have the option afterwards if it is rezoned and we've already completed the urban growth process, to bring it in for, you know, based on affordable uh availability of affordable housing at 30% ratio.
I think I'm in favor of option A and just keeping on the current process.
I'm gonna start by saying I really don't like the input in this position. I think it's, I'm not happy with this at all. I think it's great property. It's really developable. It's gonna help. It's gonna help our big picture as far as housing goes. It gives us a ton more options. But I, I, I think this should have been done a long time ago. I think these guys are professionals and they're not, they weren't, they were sleeping at the wheel or something. I don't know, but I'm not gonna. But, um, that being said, in the future, they should, uh, be a little sharper, but I'm gonna go with option B two as well. Some sort of tight timeline, you know, that they, they say six months, we'll give them six months.
Sounds like option B with the four to six month kind of timeframe is the consensus of the planning commission. Does that sound right? I'm gonna be clear coming out of this because I'm not sure we were as.
Yes.
Clear as we needed to be on the steering.
That's what I've heard, yes.
But I, I think we were clear, but we could have been clear.
Vote on this?
Do we actually need to take a formal vote on?
I don't think, I don't think so. It's pretty clear. Okay, I think we can move along to the next step map.
All right, so this next stretch, I'm gonna do my best to channel Andrew Parrish because he's the, he's the technical wizard here, but he had to go, he had to, had to get his kids somewhere. So I'm gonna do a quick run-through of the information, um, the highlights of the information that's in that draft UGB alternatives report that was in your packet. This is fairly complicated stuff, I will say. Um, and I'll try to make it reasonably understandable, but also go through it relatively expeditiously. So what we've done is for every parcel in that priority one area, um, we've rated, we've scored each of those parcels on a bunch of different, um, criteria and metrics. Um, so for each one, we've scored them on these criteria and we've then also weighted different criteria differently. And we've weighted those criteria, um, based on input that we've had from the steering committee as well as from the online open house and the, um, in-person open house. Um, I think you heard Andrew say, you know, we asked people about these different criteria and which ones they thought was most important. Um, and so we use the results from that open house to help weight the criteria. Um, and we would agree as a team too, that some of these criteria, um, ultimately are more important than others in terms of kind of the relative, um, both feasibility of development, but also just kind of impacts on future development and how you kind of proceed with growth. So I'm not gonna like go into all the details of this particular table, but it gives you a sense of what the criteria are, what the weights are and how we, um, kind of, uh, created the scoring system that goes along with this. So again, pretty, and behind this table is like a whole big huge spreadsheet with a bunch of other stuff in it. So that's just to say that this slide just kind of talks about a little bit kind of how we scored these things. So we've got, again, kind of this score for the metric, which in each case is on a one to five scale and then we multiply that by the weight. Um, and then the overall weight of that factor. Um, I've got a couple of examples here that kind of show you how we do that multiplication and end up with, you know, an overall score for something. So it's sort of, the first number is the metric score, the second number is what kind of weight it got. And then the third is the overall factor weight, um, the relative importance of that factor. To get to an individual score, um, so that's kind of the process. Again, apologies for kind of how technical that is. Um, so I'm gonna show you a number of slides that kind of represent how these different properties shook out in terms of um, their, um, relative, um, weighting, um, on these different factors. So one of the things we look at is developability. Um, there's a couple of different criteria that we use to think about developability. Um, one is just how many lots could we see developed on a given lot, once we sort of take away room for an existing house and existing improvements? And then what, you know, what's a reasonable average density, density to assume there? Um, so how many lots could a parcel produce? And then, um, we also looked at what's the value of the expected lots compared to the current market value of the property to get a sense of development feasibility. So, um, in each of these maps, the darker color is basically the higher score. So what you're seeing here basically is larger properties, um, with less development are getting a higher score because there's more potential, um, housing units that could be created on a given property, um, in those cases. And then this next one is that comparison of, again, the number of lots that could be developed compared to the real market value of the property. And what we're sort of looking at here is that in some cases, there are very expensive, um, homes, um, on these properties and that's gonna make the feasibility, the, the financial feasibility of development, um, a lot tougher, especially if there's not much residual land left to be developed. Um, so in this case, the higher scoring properties, um, are the ones that are in blue. The lower scoring properties are the ones that are in red. And then the kind of orange and light blue, um, are kind of in the middle. Um, so you kind of see some of these properties that are smaller and that have, um, really high value improvements on them. Their scoring in the red, um, or, and which means low, means relatively low development feasibility. And the ones that are larger, um, and are, um, essentially less valuable in terms of the improvements, um, they're in the dark blue. So that kind of gives you a sense of that. So, um, we also assigned an overall score to each alternative, um, for items that aren't totally captured by the individual parcel scores. Um, so I just wanted to note that, um, as well. Um, and so, um, this slide is sort of showing you how the, um, different alternatives shake out um, in terms of the overall scores related to each of the four. They're called goal fourteen factors. These are the factors that we have to evaluate per the state rules when we're thinking about the relative feasibility and attractiveness and, and, um, scoring of these different, um, properties or areas. So kind of what you're seeing here is that, um, some of these score better on some factors than others. Um, but really in general, alternative one is sort of scoring the highest on the most factors. Um, alternative five is kind of coming in second, although that farm forest compat- compatibility, um, you're getting a higher score for alternatives two, three and four, simply because there aren't as many, um, parcels in those alternatives that are directly adjacent to existing farm or forest land. And that's why you're seeing kind of the higher, um, green on a couple of those compared to say, alternative five, alternative one score is pretty much the same. But so this is kind of giving you a sense of how the alternatives score overall. A little bit more on kind of that factor one score. This is the combination of the two things that I mentioned earlier. And again, um, the dark blue are the, the, the properties that score better. So in terms of, um, development feasibility, um, those properties that are kind of closest in just kind of northeast of the city are scoring the best. Um, there's a few scattered properties in other areas who are also, that are also scoring well. Um, and then to some degree, the properties further away, um, but that also are smaller and or have higher value homes on them, um, are not scoring as well. Um, and then there's some that are kind of in the middle, um, that are either in the, you know, kind of orange to light blue. This is the factor two score, um, which is related to, um, basically um, efficiency of providing public facilities and services. Um, and what's really driving this score, um, for these properties is how close to the city something is. So you don't have to extend, um, water and sewer lines as far, you don't have to build roads as far out and also topography. So, um, it's more expensive to build those facilities, um, in areas with steeper slopes and topography than in other areas. And so that sort of, and also to extend those facilities across creeks um, or wet, wetlands or things like that. So that's kind of why you, why you see the stuff on the far east really scoring low on this criteria for those reasons. And the properties that are closer in essentially scoring better, including the ones that, um, are flatter ground. They don't have the slope or topography issues. Um, factor tri- three, um, this is, uh, kind of a mix of different, um, fact of different criteria that we grouped under factor three. This is what's called the, uh, environmental, social, energy and economics impacts of development. Um, EC is the acronym for that. And so this is looking at a variety of things, walkability, you know, whether or not there are wildlife corridors or stream areas. Um, and, um, again, kind of proximity to this, to the city is another part of this factor. Um, the things that are really kind of driving this the most are, um, proximity to the city and whether or not there is some kind of, um, natural resource on the property, um, that, um, makes it a little harder to, makes it harder to develop or could result in some impacts on natural resources. Now, I will say briefly that, um, another way to look at the natural resource issue is if those areas are in the city, the city has more control or over regulation, um, of development within those natural resource areas than if they're not. So that's the other way to kind of look at that. And again, what you're seeing here is the, um, because of the proximity and because of lack of natural resources on some of these, the stuff that's closer into the city is scoring higher, um, based on this factor. So. Uh, and then the last one here is proximity to, um, farm and forest land is really what's driving the scoring because this is impacts on, um, or compatibility with, um, adjacent or surrounding farm and forest land. And so, um, really, you know, the, the properties that are um, more directly adjacent to land zone for farm and forest use, um, are gonna get a lower score. Um, and the ones that are not, you know, that are interior properties or more directly adjacent to the city and not on the edge, they're gonna score higher. So that's kind of the pattern you're seeing with the dark blue scoring higher and the, um, the red and the orange property scoring lower. Um, and then this is our sort of total weighted score, um, on a property specific basis. Um, and so again, you're kind of seeing where things shake out in terms of adding up all those factors and all those scores and applying the weights that we applied, um, you see which ones are scoring better. Um, and again, they're the dark blue ones and the ones that are scoring less well, um, are the, the dark red with again, orange, yellow and kind of light blue somewhere in between. And I think this sort of bears out, um, in to a large degree, kind of what we heard from people about those alternatives two, three and four, not being as attractive or as, um, appropriate as one and five. You know, you see more of those properties in, uh, alternatives one and five that are either dark blue or light blue or, or yellow and the sort of two, three and four more often in the alternatives two, three and four. So. Um, so we asked the, um, we asked the steering committee, you know, how do you, um, recommend we proceed with this? Because again, our next step, as we've talked about, um, earlier, is to come up with a preferred alternative. The preferred alternative doesn't have to be exactly one of these five alternatives. It can and most likely will be some kind of hybrid or combination, um, of a couple of these. And so what we heard from the steering committee was yes, move forward with creating a preferred alternative, using the best parcels from alternatives one and five because those were the two that scored highest and those were where the properties were that scored highest. Um, and, um, along the lines of that option to be that we talked about earlier, create an additional alternative that incorporates a McKenzie Meadows property. So we can kind of see what the different, difference would be, you know, if that's brought in, which properties would sort of fall out of the preferred alternative versus if it's not brought in, if it's not rezoned and can't be part of the UGB, um, expansion, what other properties are gonna need to come in to make up, um, for that sixty acres of capacity? So that's what we heard from them was, yeah, one and five sort of shake out the best, they agree and come up with a preferred alternative that includes those, but come up with these, you know, uh, uh, these two potential alternatives. I think, yes, that is all I have on that one. Um, so I think, you know, we just want to see here again, does that make sense what we heard from the steering committee? And again, I, I missed the second half of that meeting, so hopefully I've characterized that steering committee recommendation correctly. But if anybody has anything to add to that, um, you know, let us know. And then just any thoughts on, you know, thumbs up to the steering committee recommendation or thumbs down or sideways or something, um, let us know.
Thank you. Any other comments on it?
I'm on the UGB steering committee and I really liked the idea of just axing two, three and four and concentrating on one and five or some hybrid therein. You know, why even talk about those other properties if they really don't meet our criteria?
Does everybody kind of agree with that, uh, sentiment?
I think we're getting to the shake, shakeout stage.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I like one and, one and, one and five and six, which they're gonna present to us, right?
I don't think that we should include any floodplain area, any kind.
I agree.
I think we should almost like draw a line outside of it. I think it puts us in a bad spot.
That's true. However, if we do include that, you know, the, the red flash up there, the floodplain, the city, we have better control over what's gonna happen there.
I don't think we want to have anything to do with it. I think that there's other, there's other, there's other agencies that have way more to say about it and and we would be, even if we did own it or have, have some sort of control over it, they would tell us what to do. And we might be, and it might cost us money to do it. We probably have to insure it.
Such as FEMA, you mean?
Yeah, remember what happened in Asheville, North Carolina, which was not even a floodplain.
But I think I'm gonna interrupt real quick and just say, if we come back with a preferred alternative, we can talk about that aspect of things. Um, I would personally be hesitant, hesitant to just knock any of those properties, especially the full property because those, some of those properties, the portion of them outside the floodplain might make sense to look at and I, I would kind of, and whether or not, and kind of splitting those properties, splitting the UGB line along them also could be problematic. So I, I would suggest some more conversation on that before we just ax them completely. That's just my opinion, but I, I do think it's a, that's a, that's a complic- a complicated issue, just from my perspective.
Add to that, look, if you look, if you look, were to look at like the, uh, the lot lines on those lots, just about every one of them, um, goes, includes some developable area as well as, uh, encumbered areas by uh, riparian or wetland, floodplain or wetlands. So you, you could conceivably drawing a UGB line down, splitting somebody's property in half, uh, which isn't ideal. Um, and another factor to consider is, is, and this has been discussed at various times, is that we need nineteen acres of parkland. And conceivably, some of this land could be used for not necessarily to build, you know, a bunch of baseball diamonds on it, but for passive, uh, recreation and, and you're staying out of sensitive areas, uh, pass, uh, walking past along the creek. Those could be areas that we could utilize those areas for, just, just another thing to consider. Well, you, you get out of the way when it's, you know, hopefully, get your kids out of the way. If you see the, if you see the tide coming up, but, uh, something else to think about. I agree with Matt that we could, we can, there's still time for those conversations, uh, in the future.
Okay, we're running time limit. Anything else to add from staff?
We did have, uh, and we were totally running up on the end of the time here. We did put in the packet, um, the information about the, uh, that we compiled about, uh, use of forest service lands. Cause it was a public comment, uh, that we received, uh, at least from one member and there's been some interest from, from some others about why, why aren't we just using forest service land for, uh, uh, inclusion into our urban growth boundary? Um, with the thinking that we could potentially get the land for free, um, that's not developed, uh, it's adjacent. Um, uh, good thoughts, but, uh, there, we, we did talk with, uh, our local forest ranger, Ian Reed, and he gave us a good tutorial on what the, uh, opportunities and constraints are with that kind of, uh, uh, pursuing those kinds of options. And hopefully you got a chance to look at it in your packet. We, we won't go into more detail unless you have some questions. And then we also, uh, talked to, um, uh, Oregon Department of Aviation, um, about, uh, their recommendations for compatibility of development adjacent to the airport. And we put some information in there and there's, they have, uh, some kind of, uh, uh, compatibility kind of standards that they would recommend. They're not, they're not requirements. Uh, but in terms of, uh, putting things adjacent to the airport, uh, trying to keep obviously residential away, out of the transitional zone, uh, if possible, or at least as far away from it as possible. But there's other, a whole host of other uses that could be appropriate in those areas. And, and again, we, we do need, uh, well, I guess. Uh, well, I guess not again, we haven't mentioned this tonight, but we do need around fifty three acres of, uh, employment lands, uh, commercial retail. Obviously retail may not be the best spot, but potentially a good spot for some of those kinds of uses. So. I, I guess I just opened it up. Are there any questions on that information that was presented that you want to ask or get more clarification on?
And we can send this presentation out too as a follow-up, um, because it gives a, that was a great overview by Scott, but. This will give you a little more information related to those things, so.
Yeah, I guess this information, uh, wasn't necessarily in your packet, uh, it was in the presentation.
There was a little less information in the packet about this stuff, so.
Let us, let us send the presentation around to you and then you can read that and if you have any questions, let us know.
Great.
Um, it sounds like, okay, well, do we have the mayor, uh, the council member, council, sorry. Still getting used to that.
Previous mayor.
Yeah, um, mention if we have a consensus on pursuing, um, alternatives. One and five or some incarnation of it and a potential alternative six or alternative three, which could potentially, would, would include a. Uh, the Mackenzie Meadows, uh, um, just for, just as we go along this process to see whether or not it's going to be ultimately rezoned. Does that make sense? And then just basically not, 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 not really giving much more attention to alternatives two, three and four because of the low scoring.
I think, I think I agree with that.
Kinda.
Are we, are we doing the thumb hold?
I don't, I mean, if you're asking my opinion, I, I don't think.
Everybody's pretty much timed in.
The prop, the Trapper Point properties, I, I miss.
And, and those are open, those are completely open for discussion at the next meeting, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
For people that aren't on the steering committee, um, there was three or four pretty strong comments from Trapper Point. Uh, residences to not include them. Um, but I will say, um. If anybody wants to include land in the UGB that might not want, might, might not want to come in, that would be a good place to do it, right? I mean, there's a lot of people that want, you know, there's no reason to have every, um, acre. Available right away. Obviously, some of this land is going to be way down the road, so, yeah, it's, it's not absolutely necessary that every. Every, um, resident has to agree now or, or anything like that. Um, so that's why it's great to go through this process and kind of look, I mean, we're going to go parcel by parcel next time. So it's going to be pretty interesting, um, when it gets down to the final two fifty and see what, see what it looks like.
The people on Trapper Point have been very active for, for like twenty years. They didn't like a, a lot of stuff and they, and they've been very active. So, I mean, like, it's not like they're just standing back going, oh, we don't want that. They've been paying attention the whole time.
Okay.
Anyway, I, one more thing, um, city council fully agrees that we're really looking and appreciate. The planning commission's input. Obviously, it's equally, uh, as important as the steering committee itself, so, um. Thank you for spending a lot of time on this. I know, just like us, you guys are volunteers and we appreciate all the hard work you guys put in and. I think it's really cool that we have this liaison position. We'll all be here for the next year, just for questions and, you know, tiny bit of guidance, uh, whatever. Um, I think we're going to be, I think it helps us be a little closer as committees, uh, you know, as bodies and just kind of. So you guys don't have any, you know, wonder, wonder what they're thinking. Well, you can ask me, I'm right here, so.
Yep. Okay, I guess that wraps it up then.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.